Good evening. I'd like to call the May 1st, 2018 Brunswick County Board of Education meeting to order. And if everyone would please stand for our invocation given by Ms. Catherine Cook, and presentation of colors, and pledge of allegiance by North Brunswick High School, JROTC.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day, for this time. We ask you to just give us wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that affect those in Brunswick County schools. We ask you to just be with us tonight, and we thank you for all the blessings that you give us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Left, face. Scary, colors. Present, colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, just as for all. Order, arms. Order, colors. Right, face. Trail, colors. Forward, arms.
Thank you again to North Brunswick High School, JROTC. Next on our agenda is the public address. We have one, Ms. Erica Price Pollak. Ms. Price Pollak? Yes ma'am, please come forward. Welcome. First, our board attorney will...
Good evening, Ms. Pollak. My name is Rick Green. I represent the Brunswick County Board of Education as their lawyer. At this point, I'm reading from Policy 2310, which says presentations will be limited to five minutes per person. Discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential, may not be discussed in open forum setting. Chairman, Mr. Miller, will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate, and perhaps rule the speaker out of order if necessary, and I'm sure that's not going to be necessary. I'm going to keep time, five minutes. To the extent that you use up four, I'll let you know you have one minute left, and welcome.
Thank you. And I wrote it down, just so I could... First off, I want to say, good afternoon. My name is Erica Price Pollak. I was raised in Brunswick County, a little place called Southport. I was educated in the Brunswick County Schools, Southport Primary, Elementary, South Brunswick Middle School, and I graduated from South Brunswick High School. I worked in the Brunswick County School System for five years. I was one of two school social workers at the time, and my job was to link the school to the home, and the home to the school. I'm currently a social worker for the New Hanover County Department of Social Services, where I've worked for the past 20 years, making sure that children are safe, and that their basic needs are being met. Today, I come as a parent, a parent of two children, and one of which attends South Brunswick Middle School. His first year there, sixth grade. My child, since he's been there, has had several incidents where he has been physically bullied. The first incident, he was lured into a school bathroom, and one child slapped him while the other videoed it, and then later posted it on Instagram. And from that time until now, he's been the kid that has been slapped. I met with the school, who indicated they couldn't do, could not tell me what the punishment would be, but he said that he would definitely hit home, and that this behavior would not be tolerated. Maybe a week later, my child was pushed down twice by a student while in class, who then threatened him, that if he told, like he told on the other kid, that he would beat him up. Third reported incident, my child was pushed and slapped by a student because my child was pushed by another student into this student. He no longer rides the bus because he was slapped by a student on the bus. A high school student also told another student that he would pay him $20 to beat my child up. He's, has a mark still on his face right now, from a student hitting him in the face with a binder while he was in class. And I pleaded with the school about my concerns, about my child not being safe while he was in school. I cringe every time the phone rings, and I know that it's the school calling, because I know that it's going to be bad news. So, I always cringe. At night, I cry myself to sleep sometimes, because I'm not there to protect my child, and I can't be there protecting him. But he's in a school, and he should be protected while he's in school. He should feel safe while he's in school. I'm about making changes. You know, it's not only about my child, but it's for every child that goes to school. What we have in place for bullies is clearly not working. You know, I'm from the old school. I'm about holding people responsible for their actions. I'm about teaching and about educating, and I believe that parents need to be held responsible for some of the behaviors that are being exhibited by kids in school when they bully another child. If you bully a child, you know, my thing is, don't suspend them, put them in ISS. You know, every child needs to be educated, and a lot of times, bullies don't want to be in school anyway. Put them in ISS, and make them write a three-page paper on bullying, and the impact that it has on that child that they bullied, and even on the family. A child, a child should not be able to be a part of any school events, or be involved in any extracurricular activities until a parent comes to the school, and has a conversation with the principal about what their child has done, and be required also to, to look at a video about bullying along with their child. You know, we need to make it a part of the orientation, as far as I'm concerned, that they look at bullying, that we come in with our kids, enroll them in school, that that be a part of it, so that they understand that we won't tolerate our kids being bullied in school. You know, I've asked my child more than one time, "Do you want me to take you out of school? I can homeschool you." And I've wanted him so bad to say to me, "Yes mommy," because I would have taken him out in a split second. But each time, he has said to me, "No, I like school." So that lets me know that my child is resilient, but there's so many other kids that are not like my child. The kids who have killed themselves because they've been bullied. And at what point do we say, "Enough is enough, we need to make changes, what we have in place is not working, and we don't need for it to go any farther for us to say, 'We should have did this.'" We need to do it now. Thank you. And I just want to say, if I can... I know my time is up, but if I can just make this statement, I spoke with the assistant superintendent, and I don't know if the assistant superintendent knew it or not, but I felt very dismissive with you when I spoke with you, and I don't think that's good, that when you have a parent calling to plead to you about what's going on with her child, that you were so dismissive about what the policy was, and for me to go to the homepage and make a report when it's already been investigated. So I would work on that, because I didn't feel like you were listening, and I didn't feel like you cared. And I'll say this to the superintendent, I've called you, and I've left messages. You're the superintendent of school. You actually were my principal, assistant principal at one point, and then we worked side by side as colleagues. You never returned my call. That's not good. I didn't like it. And I'm sure if you're treating all the other parents that way, they're not going to like it either. We're about keeping, educating our kids, and so we should act like we care about them.
Ms. Pollak?
Yes.
Further on the agenda, before we go into closed session, I'd like to meet with you during our break, if you don't mind waiting.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is board salutes. The Brunswick County Schools Finance Department.
Mr. Chairman and board members, it's my pleasure tonight to read a news release from the Government Finance Officers Association in reference to our finance department, and how well they've been doing. The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to Brunswick County Board of Education's Finance Department by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment. The comprehensive annual financial report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the comprehensive financial report. This organization represents over 19,000 different organizations. At this time, I have a number of certificates to present, if I could get you and maybe your board members to come down and hand these out. The first one goes to Brunswick County Finance Department for the achievement of excellence in financial recognition and reporting. Ms. Cahill?
(inaudible). (applause)
There's an individual certificate in recognition of outstanding contributions to the Brunswick County Finance Department presented to Ms. Cahill. Jennifer Lewis, Brunswick County Board salutes you in recognition of outstanding contribution to the finance department. Our third individual is Michael Humm, who is part of our distinguished group. Denise O'Donnell Jones is hereby awarded this certificate. Last but not least is Sherry Weasey. Yeah, quick photo, real quick. (inaudible). (inaudible). There we go. We get that first. Liz. (inaudible). 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 Yeah, we can't send you. Okay, three, two, one.
Okay, next on our list is the American Red Cross, Ms. Jane Lott.
Good evening. I have with me tonight Keith Cummins, who's our regional vice president, and he wanted to say a few words to the students and staff.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the board, Mr. Cub, for having us here tonight. Appreciate it, but also for the framework of support you give as the American Heart Association. It's important to have that overall support, so we really do appreciate it. But today, we're here to honor the American Heart heroes from this wonderful, giving county. And every, every middle school, this was the first year this happened here in the county, participated with us in our jump and hoops programs, and all but two of the elementary schools did as well, and that's just great. We're getting, reaching all those children, and we would like to invite it to be 100% next year. The schools that didn't participate would love to get them, and there's a lot we can bring to them. But our principals, physical education teachers, parents, and students, who took the time out of their busy schedules to reach out and to save another's life, that's what we wanted to talk about today. They're saving both lives that they know, right here in the county, but also people that they don't know. It's a very charitable thing. So Jump and Hoops for Heart is about instilling healthy habits in diet and exercise when our students are young, so they can prevent heart and stroke disease, and grow to be healthy, happy adults. The new procedures, medicine, the advocacy, the education that the funds that they raise goes towards, also helps other children who have heart disease, and adults. These adults, these people are obviously important to us. We want those children to grow and make memories with their loved ones, but then the adults also leave their footprints on our hearts, and we want further time with them, and these heart heroes help that to happen. So with that, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Jane, who's going to discuss who they are and what they've actually done for us.
I'm just, can y'all hear me? I'm really so humbled to recognize our awesome schools, PE teachers, students, and their parents. And before, you know, we want to say thank you, but I want all of the children to realize exactly, you know, who are you helping? You know, we've got a mother that we'd like to just show a quick little video, and then we'll pull up her thank you, because you saved her life, her child's life, and so many more. So if we could show that, and then we'll pull our schools up, that would be awesome.
My name is Kelly, and this is Finn, and we are so excited to tell you all today what inspired this little monster, Finster, here. It's not a coincidence that they both have similar names, that they both have a shark Finn resemblance, and that they both love water. There is some inspiration behind why Finster, and how Finster got his name, and it's this little one right here. Finn spent the majority of the first year of his life in the hospital, and he had many surgeries, including an open-heart surgery. He just had another open-heart surgery, just eight weeks ago today, and because of your donations, he's doing great. So when you're participating in Jump Rope for Heart and Hoops for Heart, and you're asking your friends and family to help raise money with your donations, just remember, you're helping kids like Finn. Thank you all so much for everything that you do for the American Heart Association. Finn is living proof of that, and we just wanted to personally say thank you. Everybody?
Thank you, daddy.
Yay! Can you show them your muscles? And say, "Thank you, everybody!"
Thank you, daddy.
And so what I wanted to do, kids, is today, these are our top lifesavers in our school. I have one of Finn's favorite little toys, which is a giraffe, and his little story on here, so you'll know, you can take this with you, and remember that when you donated, and when you were the top fundraiser, there's so many more children like Finn out there that you are helping. So, let's get started. Our top school in the district was Southport Elementary.
My name is Kelly, and this is my 18-month-old son, Finn.
And we'd like to call up Journey Douglas, Madison Jones.
We found out about Finn's diagnosis when I was 19.
Come on up. And Wendy, is not here, but Donna is. Awesome, Donna Michelle, thank you for coming. (applause) There. There you go. Thank you, sweetheart. (inaudible).
Show me your, show me your certificate. All right, in three, there you go. All right, in three, two, one. Thank you.
Cedar Grove Middle School, they don't, they do a pay-to-play, so they're in the middle of their program. James Schankel, I don't know if he's here tonight. I think he's actually coaching, if I'm not mistaken. Jessie Mae Monroe. Erin Strickland is our coordinator. Miranda Quinn Scoff. And Ms. Williams is our principal. Yay! (applause) Thank you so much. And, hey, oh, we wouldn't have had you. (laughing) There you go. Thank you so much. I'm going to give y'all a... Thank you so much. You want to keep everybody up here?
If y'all are all there, we can do it from this ankle. There we go.
Did you get your giraffe?
Got a giraffe.
Got to have a giraffe.
Got to have a giraffe. There we go. Three, two, one. Here we go.
We've got Lincoln Elementary, Ms. White, Nathan Sides, John Dykes. Come on, Nathan, all right.
You have it.
(applause) This is for you.
Right here. Cheese, cheese, cheese. There we go.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Leland Middle School, Mr. Kirby is the principal. Mary Lucas, is she here tonight? No, okay. We've got Mr. Ruth from South Brunswick. Is he here tonight? No. Come on up, Mr. Ruth. All right. Ally Williams is our top fundraiser, and Adrian Tupper was our coordinator. (applause) Thank you so much. You're awesome.
All right.
I'm going to get behind you.
All right, three, two, one.
Thank you. (applause) Supply Elementary, Ms. Costin. We've got Braxton, McLean, and Tiffany James is our coordinator. No, okay. Town Creek Elementary, Ms. C is our principal. Presley Loftus and Cody Sticks. No, aren't you here? No. We're going through these fasts. Virginia Williamson, I know Grace here. LaFerv, and Nathan McDougal. Come on up, we'll give you, you get the giraffe. (laughing) Thank you. I just want to let you know, this gentleman came in half the year and did an outstanding job. He did their best year ever for them. So that was amazing, amazing. Thank you.
There we go. In three, two, one.
All right, and we've got Wacoma Elementary, Mr. Kelly, our principal, Cooper and Sidney Bellview. Oh, wow, there they are. We've got a tie here. (applause) All right. There we go. We're going to let Dad, Dad take over there. And Joseph White, Jolanda, come on up. (applause) Get everybody in there. Thank you so much, y'all. But we got crowded, nice one. That's awesome. We're good, we're good.
Go ahead, squeeze over.
I'd like to be like one.
There we go. All right, everybody, we've got two, three, two, one. Look at this way. Hold on. Three, two, one. All right, and one more. Got Mama's phone. We ain't leaving on Mama's phone. In three, two, one. Perfect.
Do we get to kiss? Are you bad mess, or are you...
Do we get to kiss? Do we get to kiss?
You sure do. All yours.
And on behalf of the American Heart Association, we want to say thank you so much for your support, and all these wonderful children, parents, and students who give up their time and energy to help others.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. (applause) Next, under President...
All right, hold on, hold on.
Hold on a minute, wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
We have, we did not.
We're getting to school, love.
Kristen Quinn is our coordinator. Is she here? No. And I have got Jaden Rossi. Ms. Owens? Jaden, holy smokes! (laughing) Oh, my gosh! I am so not perfect, I am so sorry. (laughing)
Hey.
This Andrews, I could see.
All right, here we go. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Awesome.
I'd have definitely heard about that one if you did. (laughing) Okay, next under presentations is the STEM Council, Ms. Elizabeth Jones, Brunswick County STEM Council Chair. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Good evening. I am not Liz Jones, she's at kindergarten registration, I think, with her son or daughter. I'm Keery McKenzie, and I'm the high school math coach for Brunswick County Schools. I'm also a member of the Brunswick County STEM Council. I'm here to tell you about all the wonderful initiatives and opportunities the council has provided for the teachers and students in our district. The STEM Council is committed to building relationships between Brunswick County STEM professionals and the teachers and students in our district. On behalf of the STEM Council, I would like to thank Brunswick County Schools for providing transportation for our students, and substitutes, and stipends for the advisory board. Without that, we would probably not be able to do what we do. This year alone, I've written almost $20,000, and received in grants from professionals in our community, so it's a wonderful thing that we're doing. We've created a video that's on our website that I would like to share with you right now, so please enjoy. This is our website. It is called "What is the STEM Council?"
What is the Brunswick County STEM Council? The STEM Council is a combination of an advisory board made of teachers and instructional coaches, teachers from each high school and middle school, and some from elementary, as well as community partners in the STEM industries. There are lots of programs that are supported by the STEM Council. Extreme STEM tours allow every eighth grader to tour STEM industries in our region, as well as collaborate with 10th graders as ambassadors, in order to learn about all of the great STEM opportunities in our region. They also have the chance to go to Brunswick Community College and hear about all the programs available there. We have middle school robotics as a part of the Brunswick County STEM Council. Leland Middle and Wacoma School had teams, as well as high school robotics, which have students from each high school, and this year, we received the award for 15th place in North Carolina. We have an EASE event at Brunswick Community College that includes 7th graders from Cedar Grove, as well as Wacoma School, and doing a forensic lab at BCC. And we also have Science Fest at BCC, where 30 freshmen from each high school go to BCC and participate in hands-on lab activities. Girls who co-clubs are popular at Shiloh, West, and Early College, and include girls and community members that learn coding together. We have very popular science Olympiad teams at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and these guys go and compete in regional competitions at UNCW, and we even hold the elementary regional competition right here in our own backyard at West Brunswick High School. We have several kids go to states to compete each year. STEM Speaks is a TED Talks-like event for 10th graders that come with their teachers and hear professionals from around our region give a TED Talk speech, and they also have lunch with these professionals and learn soft skills. We have also lots of new initiatives for this year that we have done. We created and launched a new website in order to better communicate with our community members and teachers. We did a trip to Tech Mountain for any girls who were into coding, whether it's rock army or robotics, and we worked with women in tech to make this trip a great success. We did a science Olympiad Invitational to better prepare our high school students for the main event at the regional competition at UNCW. This was a first-time event for Brunswick County schools, and it was a great success. One initiative that we're particularly excited about that we started was STEM Attribute Awards. Teachers could nominate students for STEM Attribute Awards, and students got to take signs home to put in their front yards for...
There are lots of programs that are supported by the STEM Council. Extreme STEM Tours allow every eighth grader to tour STEM industries in our region as well as collaborate with 10th graders as ambassadors in order to learn about all of the great STEM opportunities in our region. They also have the chance to go to Brunswick Community College and hear about all the programs available there. We have middle school robotics as a part of the Brunswick County STEM Council. Leland Middle and Waukamaw School had teams, as well as high school robotics, which have students from each high school. And this year, we received the award for 15th place in North Carolina. We have an EASE event at Brunswick Community College that includes 7th graders from Cedar Grove, as well as Waukamaw School, and doing a forensic lab at BCC. And we also have Science Fest at BCC, where 30 freshmen from each high school go to BCC and participate in hands-on lab activities. Girls who code clubs are popular at Shiloh, West, and Early College and include girls and community members that learn coding together. We have very popular Science Olympiad teams at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. And these guys go and compete in regional competitions at UNCW. And we even hold the elementary regional competition right here in our own backyard at West Brunswick High School. We have several kids go to states to compete each year. STEM Speaks is a TED Talks-like event for 10th graders that come with their teachers and hear professionals from around our region give a TED Talk speech. And they also have lunch with these professionals and learn soft skills. We have also lots of new initiatives for this year that we have done. We created and launched a new website in order to better communicate with our community members and teachers. We did a trip to Tech Mountain for any girls who were into coding, whether it's rockamy or robotics. And we worked with women in tech to make this trip a great success. We did a Science Olympiad Invitational to better prepare our high school students for the main event at the regional competition at UNCW. This was a first-time event for Brunswick County Schools and it was a great success. One initiative that we're particularly excited about that we started was STEM Attribute Awards. Teachers could nominate students for STEM Attribute Awards and students got to take signs home to put in their front yard for one week saying that they were chosen for the Attribute Award. And the attribute that we focused on this year was collaboration. And students were very proud of their successes and so happy to be chosen. How do we support all of these wonderful STEM programs? Well, first of all, Brunswick County Schools is a wonderful partner because they pay for buses, substitutes, and a stipend for the advisory board. But also, our community partnerships have supported us through and through every single step of the way and we have secured over $18,000 in grants this year. Thank you so much for your continued support and together, the possibilities are endless.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ben Chapman and I teach at Waukamaw School and I'm also a member of the advisory board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I've known some of you for almost a quarter of a century and Ms. Milligan was actually my mentor back in 8th grade. I want to thank you for what's been a great year. And it's been a great year because I've been able to help out students like these, part of our FLL and different STEM activities we've been able to provide for them. The first event for the STEM Council is FLL, which is the First LEGO League. And it starts out in August with a real-world theme that first inspires, provides. And this year, our theme was hydrodynamics. At Waukamaw, Leland, and South Middle, we build LEGO kits, set up a competition table that many of you may have seen last year at a board meeting. And we design and build a LEGO robot from scratch that will conquer all these little challenges. Trevor Tikolski is here tonight to show you the LEGO robot that the team designed and built. And one of the challenges it has to conquer is simply adding water to a fountain to make the water rise. And tell us about how many, how much code it takes to actually write that.
In the beginning, I used the program that the LEGO Mindstorms kit comes with and that took us about a week to write the code for this. It was just a lot of guessing and checking and using your errors and mistakes to help better your success.
And I'm real proud of their development. I've known Trevor for years and we've brought in a lot of people from different grades. We have Emmy Russ from 5th grade. We have Dallas Russ from 7th grade. And so, being unique at Waukamaw as a K8 school, we can bring in different grades and work together as a family to really make this team special. And FLL also contributes to the high school team, which is a collaborative effort of all the teams, of all the schools. So we're hoping these guys will eventually be part of those teams. I just want to also go on to talk about how the school board has been supporting us and we just hope that you continue to help out with programs like these because LEGO as a business is kind of expensive. So we appreciate anything you can do for us. And I'm just general, I'm just so excited about how much work these kids can put in. I mean, some of these guys spent almost every day after school for three months, was it? And that's just quite a commitment for just two competitions we'll attend. We didn't make it to Nationals this year, but we did make it to State. The next thing I want to talk to you about, I was gonna have Dallas talk about her reflections on FLL and what she got out of it.
Hi. In the First LEGO Leader Robotics Team, I mainly focused on the project or helping people with water. We decided to code an app that would help people save water by getting out of the shower faster. That's what I mainly did, I mainly coded. And I learned a lot of things. I had no idea what coding even was before I got into this. And so, I came here and I learned. I learned about teamwork, I learned coding, I learned so many things. And it's an amazing experience. My little sister, she wants to be a robotics engineer now because she was involved in this. So I just wanted to say that this was an amazing experience for everyone that was involved in it. And I really appreciate everything that you guys have done for us and everything that the coaches and the kids I've worked with have put into this. So, thank you.
Trevor, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just basically, I did mainly the coding aspect of the robot and the whole programming and everything. And back from 6th grade, I would say after school, Mr. Chapman, almost every day, he would teach me how to code. Before that, I could do a little bit here and there, but he really just helped me excel and the STEM program helped me excel with coding. And then he introduced me to the robotics club and from there, just going to competitions and learning to exceed was amazing.
Thanks. And Trevor and Dallas were recipients of the yard sign that you may have seen earlier. So Trevor was the first at Waukamaw to get it and then Dallas. So thank you, guys. Next thing I just want to mention is the Extreme STEM Tour and I'm gonna have Trevor talk about that a little bit. It's called Extreme because we have to hustle to different businesses and we see buses go by, they're going someplace, we're going someplace. And we get to see these incredible people working in their fields. And as a teacher, you get to, you get a special feeling when you, because in the classroom, all you do is math or science. You try to make things relative so that the kids see the importance of math. But actually going to visit a site, you get to actually build lessons and reflect on things that you've seen as you build your lessons. And they get, they get more understanding and they get more motivated. So it's all about motivating, making it relevant, and I hope it helps the kids. Trevor.
So this past year, I was allowed this amazing experience to go to Duke Energy Power Plant for the STEM, for the STEM Tour, and it was an amazing experience. We went there and they allowed us to tour the facility and they had tons of interactive things, it was cool. They ran simulations of temperature getting too hot in the power plant, so they would allow students to just go and interact and be able to shut down and really, you do a simulation if something was to go bad at the power plant. And then they showed the robots, because humans can't go into the radioactive parts of the power plant, so they showed us and allowed us to demonstrate the robots going in and fixing any problems that they would have. So it was just an amazing experience, just to be able to go and see what goes on behind the scenes that we don't get to see every day. So thank you, all.
Thank you.
And I think Keri's gonna continue with other programs we have.
So in addition to being math coach and part of the advisory board, I'm also a high school robotics coach along with two other people. We also have two engineers who are retired who come and mentor our team. I personally know nothing about robotics. I teach science and math, I don't know how to code, so you're amazing. But, so, yeah, I will tonight. So the students that we have are very committed. They come once a week during the fall and on January 6th, there's a huge reveal that's all across the world. And they have to, at that point, they have to decide how they're gonna build this robot. They have six weeks to build it till midnight, exactly six weeks. So we meet every day and we try things and they fail and then we retry things and we spend a lot of money. And we hope and pray that we're gonna get to competition and do something. Our last competition this year, when we almost went to State, Saturday morning, the robot wouldn't turn on. They turned, they pressed the button, the power wouldn't come on and we were all devastated. So at the tournament, the other teams are very, very friendly and it's cooperation, competition and cooperation. So they came and helped us recode our robot. We ended up getting, going to finals and almost going to State. So, and it's our second year, so it was so exciting and nerve-wracking at the same time. So we had, one of my students, the marketing captain, was going to come today and show you our robot and it would have been amazing, I promise. But he contacted me right before we started and said that he locked his keys in his car. And so...
A robot.
So, you won't see that demonstration today, but it is pretty amazing. And we have tons of videos on it, so maybe next time. So right now, I want to talk about our Invitational Science Olympiad and I think that we have some students from Early College. Laura Parker and Shay who are going to talk to you about our Invitational. And that was our, it's our first year for the Invitational, it was a huge success.
Hi, I'm Laura, this is Shay and Parker. We're all with the Early College Science Olympiad Program where we've all been in it since our freshman year, I believe. And throughout the time, we've seen the growth that students have been able to put together, but we haven't seen growth as much as we have this year with the creation of the Invitational Competition. Once the competition was created, it allowed us to be able to have an opportunity before we went to Regionals, where we were able to put our group out online and say, "This is what you have to do," and put them in a simulated competition scenario so that we could see how they would place and what types of questions they were missing, which allowed for better development in the future. Anything to add?
Just gonna say real quick, the Invitationals was really important to most of the members in Science Olympiad because I feel like it did help our performance at Regionals. A lot of our members, especially the building events, they were able to go out and test what they had wrong. And they did find some problems and they were able to really excel at the Regionals this year. And I feel like next year, it would really help us with Invitationals and doing even better at regional competition.
And another thing, we'd like, as a team, to better utilize the Invitational and we're planning on actually using it instead of deciding... There's junior varsity and varsity teams in Science Olympiad and we'd like to use the Invitational to decide who gets to be on what team based upon their dedication and what they get ready and how well they do at the Invitational. So I think it'd be really useful for that aspect of our Science Olympiad team.
So this year, we also took all of our robotics girls and rockamy girls who were interested in coming to Wilmington, to Tech Mountain, and Women in Tech. And it was a pretty fabulous day. The space there is so amazing, it's like Google Space. There's thinking rooms and idea rooms and all sorts of things. The girls were fascinated. So I want to invite Emily to ta, Emma, sorry, to talk.
Hi, I'm Emmy Russ and I went to Tech Mountain this year because Mr. Chapman offered me to go since I was in robotics. And when we went there, they taught us a few things about coding and they, there was a bunch of female engineers and entrepreneurs and they were so inspiring, like they talked about their careers and everything that they had done or they were doing at the moment. And it was really inspiring and it inspired me more to become a robotics engineer and it inspired me to be in an event in Science Olympiad, which I was in, about coding, which I placed forth in. So I just wanted to say thank you.
And finally, STEM Speaks, we, this is our sixth year, I think, for STEM Speaks. So we have speakers come in who are community members and are in STEM careers and they talk to selected 10th graders about their journey in STEM. So I think we have Luke Dixon, who's going to come and talk to us about STEM Speaks.
Mr. Dixon, welcome.
Thank you.
Just so y'all know, me and his father grew up together. We go to church together.
All right. My name is Luke Dixon. I'm a sophomore at South Brunswick High School and I just went to the STEM Speaks Conference. The STEM Speaks Conference highlighted the opportunity, the opportunities that Brunswick County has to offer to students interested in STEM. The speakers offered information about STEM and how students like us will one day make up the workforce and how we're the future. We were given multiple opportunities to speak directly with presenters and learn about what they do on more of a personal level. STEM Speaks is something that I think is necessary for more students to be exposed to, as many won't be able to go to conferences like this. Even for students who may not be trying to pursue a career in STEM, it is very informative and shows where hard work can get you. Thank you to Brunswick County Schools and everyone who was involved with the event and I hope that every year, we can get this program and more programs like it to be more successful.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chapman, Mr. Chapman, I got a question for you.
Sure.
You don't have to answer tonight, but in an ideal situation for Brunswick County Schools, I'd like your opinion at some point about where coding should begin, with what grade level, how much, where, what courses, all that scenario. I'm very interested in that world and I think the rest of the board is too. We just touch, we know, we were just talking about a little sampling, sampling the students here tonight, so we'd like to investigate this further. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, next on the agenda is our teacher's voice, Ms. Phillips.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We have the pleasure, it won't just be me today giving a teacher voice. I have a team today, so I'd like to introduce some phenomenal people that I've worked with at Leland Middle School. First, I'd like to bring up Corinne Spivey. She is a teacher, this is actually her third year, so she's finishing the BT program. She's been at Leland Middle School for the last three years and she teaches, she's a teacher of children with special needs. I'd like to also bring up Ms. Shannon McDonald. She is Ms. Spivey's assistant and has been at Leland for 20-plus years. And she has also worked with children with special needs for the past 20 years at Leland. I would also like to bring up Ms. Debbie Moore. Debbie Moore is the parent of McKenzie, there in the beautiful black and white dress. And she's also a parent advocate for our children with special needs. So we're a team, you get a team tonight. We have a really awesome presentation for you. I hope everyone is smiling from ear to ear when we're all finished. So I'm gonna start there. And first of all, I just want to talk to you about what we're presenting. We are presenting a very special program that's happening within a Brunswick County School, middle school at Leland Middle. It's a program that enhances life skills and cultivates true friendships. Okay, cool. It's a program of innovation and personalization, which in that involves some risk-taking. And it can change the school culture. And I feel like this is something we, there's been a change in our culture. So I'm just gonna have your attention on the photograph that we have up. This is a group of 7th graders and if you'll notice the message above their head. The title of the program is called "The Adaptive Program." In my class, it's the Adaptive Art Class. And in the gym, it's called the Adaptive PE Class. As the photo says, I support your uniqueness. The program embodies what our school looks like. Lindsay, actually, from the Beacon did a story featured our class back in February. I'd like to share with you how it began, why it started, what it's done for all of those involved, adults, children alike, and why it's important for us as a school system to initiate the program throughout Brunswick County Schools and for it to be a sustainable program. That's very important to us. We're on our third year of the program and we want to see this as the gold standard in Brunswick County. So you got a little tidbit of it last year, if you guys recall, when we were doing the Spotlight on Schools. And Leland Middle School Spotlight was the Adaptive PE and the Adaptive Art Program. So there's a small video, I'm sure you probably remember a little bit. But I know I've succeeded in presenting this program to you and us presenting this program to you, as if, when we're all finished, you're all smiling from ear to ear, you all feel warm inside. Some of you may go home and talk to your families about this program this evening. Some of you may decide to be an advocate for this program and help us spread the word. And I'm hoping our superintendent's cabinet will push this program and talk to our principals about what they can do to initiate this program in their school. It costs nothing. It takes very little to make some really big changes. So with that, I have a short video that our PIO, Daniel Seaman, put together for us of a snapshot in my classroom, the art room. So if you'll take your attention to the screen.
Yeah, pretty much every day, I was with Kristen.
Okay.
And here, well, everyone works with someone in this class.
Okay.
At the beginning of the year, we all switched up.
Okay.
We all worked with different people.
What color is that?
Green.
Yeah, green.
And right now?
We can do like, more stuff in this class because sometimes you like to just be lazy. And like, yeah. So maybe this year, yeah, opportunity to really, really like.
Yeah, do more things together.
And so he's been able to say, you know, hello, hi, or good.
Okay.
With, we've gotten it down to only needing one prompt versus the three prompts that we needed at the beginning of the year with him.
He said yellow?
Yeah.
Yellow, good job.
You, not.
Yeah, I'm not yellow.
Everyone in the room is friends with everyone?
Yes, this is like our family.
Alright.
I do my posters and stuff too.
And I love working with Alyssa and Jordan Christian, all them.
Hold on, I wanna know what she does. Do you train?
Jay?
Yeah, train.
I love this class. I love working out with the adapted. And it just makes me feel like a better person because I actually get to help someone during a school time. Usually, I never really get to help people, so this is a really fun thing for me.
Now it's to the point when we see them in the hallway or in the cafeteria, I get the tap on the shoulder. Hey, hey, look, look. And then they're waving to their helpers that they see in here.
Yeah. So maybe this year, yeah, opportunity to really, really like.
Yeah, do more things together.
So Daniel did a great job. A gateway to social interaction. That says it all in four words. Come on back up, team. So I want to ask you guys, what did you see? Like, what sort of things did you see in that video?
Unbelievable. That's great. Unbelievable. That's what it's all about.
Is it something that you thought was happening or could happen or that, you know?
That needs to happen.
That needs to happen. Shouldn't it be the gold standard?
Definitely a lot of interaction, inclusive interaction.
Absolutely.
And I like seeing that. That's very helpful for all of the students.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, I think it's important for us to kind of define what the word adaptive means because not all of us quite understand kind of what we're talking about. So I looked it up in Webster's Dictionary and this is, it tells us it's to make suitable requirements or conditions to adjust or modify fittingly and to adjust or to adjust one's environments or conditions. So why was there a need to make adjustments to the day in the life of a few children with special needs? If we rewind four or five years ago, before this program started, for me, it was, our students with special needs were put into an elective class like art or music or PE with 25 to 30 same-age peers. Now Ms. McDonald has been at Leland for a very long time and I'd like her to give you a snapshot of what it was like when she, before the program. So Ms. McDonald?
Good evening. A snapshot of about 20-some years ago. And most of you in the room have seen me in the schools and working with special children. And but you didn't see what was sometimes behind the closed doors when I had to take them to PE or art or music. It's one assistant, one assistant to three to five children. And just imagine sitting in art class with all these 30-some children and you have to do what they are doing, which our children are, the special needs children are not doing that. Guess who's doing it? Me. So there's three art projects to five art projects, or music instruments, or doing physical activities with them. It's just me doing all the activities. And when they take the art pieces home, it's not a jingling from their child. It's from Mrs. McDonald, trying to help all of these children. And what this Adaptive PE and Adaptive Art has done is so amazing to see that the children respond to other children. Because when it was just me, no one, none of the children, nobody was interacting with the children because they had to do their art projects or their physical activities or doing the musical activities. So they weren't interact, they didn't know how to. And to ask a teacher to do two lessons in one session is very difficult because some teachers don't know how to modify it all the way down for our children. And this is giving the children to, to look at it like, hey, I matter, I count. I can interact with other children. And it's amazing how our children really interact with other people, giving them a chance. And the other children like, hey, our children, they are smart. They can talk, they can do this. They can communicate with us. They can do this and that. And it's like, yeah, because somebody gave them a chance. Thank you.
So what Ms. McDonald said, just to touch on, sometimes kids who are not educated about the differences in others become scared of them because they don't understand them. So now imagine you're a parent of a child who's in an environment where they struggle to thrive, they're surviving. You want them to be with their same-age peers. You want them to experience a lesson on painting and art or soccer and PE. But they're overwhelmed because the classroom is too loud, it's too crowded. Everyone's attention is on them because they might say an inappropriate word. So there were quite a few barriers for our students with special needs to get the same elective experience our students in a general education environment were getting. So in short, and I think you all will agree, their elective time was stressful. It was often boring because they were ignored by their same-age peers. And it was meaningless on the learning path to their success. So the goal at the beginning of the program was to give our students, who are exceptional children, a meaningful elective period, which meant time to learn a specific skill, like playing soccer or painting, but also cultivate relationships with peers and find advocates in those peers. The answer was, let's try something different. We had to be innovative. Instead of putting our self-contained classroom children into a general education class, let's put specific general education kids with, to suit the needs, I'm sorry, kids with our self-contained classroom kids. So let's, let's change the environment up. Let's adapt the environment to suit the needs of our diverse learners and assign everyone a friend, a helper, a buddy, a coach. So in art, we were granted a time slot during our 6th grade electives when this started, which took some time for our principal to make it work. Because we have a very large population at Leland Middle School. Our classes are very big. So it took a risk on our principals' plate to fit this into the schedule. Because it ran through 6th grade electives, we needed 6th graders who had the characteristics of, you know, being mature, kind, helpful, and a leader. Because we didn't know the uprising 6th grade, we recruited outside of Leland Middle. We contacted 5th grade teachers to our schools that feed into Leland. We contacted principals. We asked for recommendations because they knew the kids. We couldn't on day one, look at them and say, well, you might be, you know, good for this class. So it, again, took, you know, coming outside. So I'd like Ms. Spivey, if she would, to kind of talk about the first year in PE and what that looked like and how we found the right kids to coach our kids. So Ms. Spivey?
It was my first year teaching. I'm coming in and, okay, we're gonna have this Adaptive PE program. Okay, great. But it's new for everybody. So we went through it together, which was an awesome experience for myself because I wasn't alone. We were working on it together as a team. We looked at, we started the year, probably about the first semester, with just us in there with the PE teacher and our students. And then we worked on going through 8th graders. Okay, who would be the right fit for so-and-so? Who would fit best with this person's needs? And we looked at not only, you know, academic standing, attendance, athletic ability. That's not the end-all, say-all, but you wanted that to have the basic skills because that's what we were working on with our guys. But we also looked at the kids who needed some leadership roles. We found some of our best helpers, coaches, and friends were some of the students who might be struggling. They might be getting in trouble more often because they need that leadership role. They need that ability to have some responsibility for themselves. So we went through and we paired everybody up. And then we had to go through and explain to each helper, coach, friend, okay, they do the exact same thing y'all do, just a little differently. It might not be your normal typical definition of how you throw the ball, but they can still throw the ball. They're very capable, just like Ms. McDonald said. It just looks a little different. So with the helpers, PE staff, principals, assistants, everybody, we said, okay, let's make this work. We're gonna show our students as well as their helpers, they're, they're still middle school students just wanting to do the same activities and have meaningful electives. So that's kind of where we started and pulled from. And, excuse me, by the end of the year, we had helpers going to Special Olympics with us. And they had built those strong relationships and it was trusting for us. We said, okay, you're going with your helper, you're going to these three events. Alright, this is our, you know, home base. We will touch base with you, but if you need anything, you come find us. We will come find you. But we knew our students, they were safe. They were happy. They were in control and able to do everything they wanted to do because we had these such strong helpers.
So I have a short little slideshow that I'd like you to see of some pictures of our pairings of students in various events. So I'm gonna play that. So events like an Adaptive Art Show, where parents and friends and coaches, even bus drivers attended, as well as a musical about the 50 states that was performed for the same audience. And the Special Olympics, where art buddies and student coaches attend to cheer on their friends. Now, over the last three years, we have had some really amazing friendships come out of this program. And I'd like to highlight one in particular. Ms. Debbie Moore is the mother of Mackenzie, again, in the beautiful black and white dress. And I'd like Ms. Moore to come up and kind of give an, an idea of her daughter before the program and what it's done for her since the program.
Thank you. I want to say thank you, Ms. Phillips, for giving me this opportunity because this has really been something that's been a rack in my brain all year. Because Mackenzie and her buddy have developed a friendship. A little girl comes over to our house when we had, we're off for winter break and we had all those snow days. She came over and played in the snow with Mackenzie and my other daughter. She brings her birthday present. She...
Olivia.
She told her dad when they started high school this year that one of the things that didn't upset her but made her sad about high school and the most difficult thing for her was she'd see Kenzie at school and Kenzie'd be going off to her class and she'd have to be going the other way. And she didn't have time to stop and say, hey, because if she did, she'd be late for class. So that's kind of friendship they developed. And it was, I mean, Mackenzie became where she was socially more, she communicated appropriately and more than she did with, just out in the public. In the hallway, she'd say hi to people. Instead of maybe hitting somebody on the back of the head to say hi, she'd actually say hi. Physically, she developed stronger skills, throwing, catching, things like that. She was really fortunate to be a part of the program at LMS when it started. And it's, it's beneficial to, on all ends. I mean, like I said, socially, physically, creatively. The art program, she has art that I still have on my walls at home from when she did it at LMS. And even for the gen ed kids that are involved in the program, they might develop an interest in a future career, something they might want to do because it could lead to so many different avenues of things that they could do. And the peer coaching's encouraged her to do more when she was in PE. These programs aren't in the high school. I mean, we, once they go to high school, it's just not there. They still go out on field trips, doing fun things, educational things, a lot of life skill-building things. They go to Walmart and they have to, they know how much money they have and they have to, they have their list and they have to decide what they can and can't get with the amount of money they have. But they're not having any social interaction with peers outside of their classroom. It's all within the EC class. And I think she misses that. It basically leads to seclusion. They're just in their self-contained class. And I don't think that's fair for them. There's no scheduled elective time for them. A couple of the kids go out to PE, but it's not scheduled. It's kind of sporadic. So they don't get PE, dance, music, art class, any more than they do with what their, their EC teachers do within the classroom. And I think that's a huge disservice to them. And like I said, this is my motto is, she is a student at North Brunswick High School. She's not a diagnosis. She is not a classification for her eligibility for the class she's in. She is a student and she deserves to have everything that any other student has, no matter what we have to do to get that for her. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to see this program transition into North as a baby step, as a start, as a trial, as a taking a risk. To be able to give Peyton and Mackenzie something like what they had at Leland Middle School. I know that there are many, many willing elective teachers at North specifically that would love to be some sort of leadership coach. Even if it's not a class, it's not a set class, it's a leadership coach. Could that be an elective? Could that be something that, you know, is assigned to a teacher where Peyton's job is to work with Mackenzie in the art room? And she's graded based on her leadership, not based on the art project itself. So if you have willing teachers to do this, like it should be a very, to me, it seems very easy. We want Mackenzie to still be able to work on skills that she learned in the Adaptive PE class. I also know that student coaches and helpers have a drive for this as well. They've contacted me. They've contacted Ms. Spivey. We see them out in the community. How's so-and-so doing? I'd love to see them. I don't see them anymore. You know, those coaches got the same, if not more, out of that program than our students with special needs. So I have a video that a student took upon themselves, Ms. Peyton, and a gentleman Hunter, another student, that they would like you to hear. And I hope the sound is okay. It might be low.
My name is Alani.
And I'm Peyton Godby. And we're both students of the Adaptive PE program at Leland Middle School.
Who did you work with last year?
I worked with Mackenzie.
And I worked with Gage.
What was your experience like in the class?
Well, over time, we both formed really strong relationships with our partners, which was so much fun.
Would you like to have continued this program throughout high school?
I definitely would have because I see Mackenzie in the hallways and it's just, like, we both get so upset because we never have any time to interact. So if we had the class, we would have that, like, one-on-one time.
I feel the same way because I see Alani, which is also a student of that class. And I'll see her in the morning and I'll say hey to her, but other than that, I really don't have time to have a conversation with her.
What was the difference between your interactions with the students from the beginning of the year to the end?
Well, for me, I already knew Mackenzie at the beginning of the year because she's friends with one of my friends. But I didn't, like, we didn't have a strong relationship or any, like, interaction, really. But over time, we, like, we just played together all the time. So then outside of school, I would go to her house and we'd go on bike rides. And on one of the snow days, I went over there and we built snowmen together and it just made her so happy. So I feel like if we could transfer that into the school, then more people will be like that and not just me.
Um, my partner was Gage and he was first afraid of me. He, he really didn't, like, you know, like, interact with me that much. But as time progressed, we started, like, playing soccer and stuff and our connection just got... and our connection just got better.
That was good.
So I guess the question is, and I'd love you ladies to come back up here, how do you make this work? You know, you kind of go back to how it started at LMS four years ago with a few willing teachers, supportive parent, a principal who's willing to be more innovative, think outside the box. And a, a way to make it work within their staff, their schedule, their students, their school, that building itself. Again, no need for additional funds. Don't need an additional teacher. Don't need an additional teacher assistant. Just innovative thinking, a compassion for student success, and a passion for being something, a very small part of something much larger. I promise you, with sustainability in mind for this program, the school culture will change guaranteed. And I have proof that I'm going to show you right now. And if you don't cry here... So again, we support everyone's uniqueness at Leland Middle School. So thank you for listening. I hope, who's smiling from ear to ear right now? Hope, at least, at least most of you. And I hope that you'll go home and share with your family. I hope that you'll be compelled to advocate for our program, talk to the right people, and, and spread the news to our principals. Share this program with the principals. I will go talk to them. She will, she will. Like, this is not a difficult practice. It's an innovative practice that costs nothing. And it, again, we're just getting better. It's just going to continue to get better. So, thank you.
Let me say something, Ms. Phillips. I'm not going to tell my age, but forty years ago, I guess, when we were in sixth grade, this young man came to our class. And we're still friends today. I mean, we talk every week.
Was it you that did that? Or was it the classroom?
There was no program in place. We just all kind of dabbled and all of us just kind of took him under our wing. And he graduated with us in nineteen-something. And he still, he still wears his class ring proudly. He visits my office at least once a week.
And I see this with Peyton and Mackenzie. They were lifelong friends. I know that.
It's great.
We can give this to a lot of kids in our county. We can, we can give this program to a lot of kids.
I hope the board feels the same way. I'm sure they do. So I would instruct you to get with superintendent and Dr. Oates and...
There's Ari.
That's okay.
One more left.
That's all right. I'd love to see it.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And thank you, Mackenzie. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. We're almost there. We okay now? Continue? Okay, next on agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion for approval? Got a motion by Ms. Milligan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cook. All in favor? Approval of minutes from April tenth, regular meeting, April twenty-fourth, operations, April twenty-fourth curriculum, and April twenty-fourth budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve all those minutes.
Okay, Ms. Cook? Second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Thompson? All in favor? Nothing on the consent. Can we take a break here? We good to take a break before action? Think about ten minutes?
Take the order, Mr. Green. Could you take the seat, please?
Ten hour break, I mean, ten minute break. Ten hour break.
Next is on the agenda is action items. First is the early site work authorization to proceed for Town Creek Middle, which have, was discussed at the operations committee in full. Any discussion? Yes.
But it's the first step in the preparation for construction of Town Creek Middle School. And it's scheduled for the summer to avoid traffic congestion with, I think, something like thirty thousand loads of earth filled.
That's a lot. I forget how many dozens of trucks a day, but it's a lot. So you...
Yeah, thirty thousand cubic yards of fill.
Lot of trucks a day.
Lot of trucks and we're looking to get them done before school starts.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Get them started. I, Mr. Chairman, unless you have anything to add?
No, sir. We just asked for approval for forwarding change orders one and two to the county commissioners for execution. Change order one being the early site work in the amount of two million dollars. Change order number two being for the early, the elementary school addition at Town Creek.
And that would be for an actual start of construction?
Yes.
We have bids that are within budget?
We will be receiving the bids tomorrow on the elementary school and on the site work, I believe, on the tenth. We have a guaranteed maximum price not to exceed a twenty-three-some million dollars. And when those bids come in, we'll do a final reconciliation of the guaranteed maximum price.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking of Lincoln, but we have a contract to Bordeaux Construction.
That's, that's the next item.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the early site work?
I'd make a motion that we proceed with site preparation work for Town Creek Middle School.
And motion by Mr. Thompson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cook? Any discussion? All in favor? Next is the authorization to proceed for Town Creek Elementary addition.
Yes, sir. That's, that's in the amount of two point four million dollars. Again, that's working out of the existing guaranteed maximum price. And the, by virtue of the wording in the original contract that was signed by the county, this additional work needs to be authorized in writing.
Motion?
I make a motion that we approve authorization to proceed for the Town Creek Elementary addition.
Have a motion by Ms. Milligan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Lemon? Any discussion? All in favor? Next is the contract to Bordeaux Construction Company for the Lincoln Elementary.
This was a contract, it, it was bid out. We had six bidders. Bordeaux was low bidder. The bids with all the accepted alternates came into, within our estimate of three point two eight five million. There, there were about fifty thousand dollars out. And, and we also are doing the chiller and the front canopy out of capital outlay funds.
We have, how many classrooms?
Six classrooms.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for Bordeaux Construction for Lincoln Elementary.
Have a motion, Mr. Thompson? Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Cook? Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Student recognition, uh, discussion, superintendent?
I, one discussion item that I want, that's not on this list. And Ms. Rutledge, you and I were talking today about the steel and maybe the early purchase of steel to ensure that we buy it at a, at a lower rate, at the lowest rate possible. Would you expand or expound a little bit on that?
Well, it might end up saving us money.
Yes, sir.
I guess at some point, if the tariffs become applicable, it's going to cost us down the road, but at least on our new construction, we might be able to head it off.
Yes, sir. The really interesting discussion item is the student recognition celebration, which is May seventeenth, which is about two weeks away. It'll be at North Brunswick High School this time where we bring those young folks in and celebrate the, their distinction, their, their, celebrate what they have done over this past year that has been noteworthy throughout, not just in athletics, but also in the classroom. And then some of the work that you saw talking about here with the STEAM program, there's a couple of students there that'll be recognized also. So that'll be really good. The other three are just our meetings, parent advisory council on the twenty-ninth, committee meetings on twenty-second. We'll get that out to you on the schedule when we determine exactly what the, what the needs are in time-wise to discuss. Next board meeting will be June the fifth and we will be just about at the end of the school year and getting ready for graduation at that point in time. We have thirty-three students, I believe it's thirty-three, graduating from BCC here in the next eight or ten days. And out of those thirty-three, I think they have fifty-eight associates degrees in there. So that's a, a very, very good. Ms. Gags will be going to the State Board of Education meeting on Thursday where she will be recognized for the Blue Ribbon School. I plan to attend with her. That'll be a fun time for her in the early college high school.
Mr. Chairman, one quick item, and it's kind of a highlight of the actions we just taken. We do want to have groundbreakings for some of our new construction. Even though much of our work that is approved in the bond is being completed quietly, actual new construction...
I actually...
Start.
Yes, sir. And we had a discussion in cabinet and I've asked Ms. Rutledge to get the gold paint out for the shovels so that we could set that date here very soon to do. And for both of them, at all three places.
Well, I think the public probably would say, well, it's about time.
Yes, sir.
So, but a lot of work has gone into the planning and the estimating and we're bringing the projects in on budget and we're going to have them ready as soon as we can possibly have them ready.
Yes, sir.
Who, is that all?
Yes, sir.
I, I received one thing today from the North Carolina School Board Association. Board of Directors is inviting each school board to nominate one of its members to serve on the North Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Committee. The committee is tasked with development, developing a draft legislative agenda for the association for consideration adoption by the delegate assembly. They're asking for one nomination per board, if anybody's interested. Yeah, if anybody's interested. And then they'll choose, once you fill out the application part, and they will select it. So if anybody's interested in serving on the legislative committee, not everybody jump at once.
See what's involved with it.
Yeah, yeah. All right, Ms. Cook? Show us some interest. I make a motion that we nominate Ms. Cook. Do I have a second? Ms. Milligan, second? All in favor?
Well, I guess I'll find out. Read it and read it right.
Okay, nothing else, entertain a motion for closed session as stated on the agenda.
So moved.
So moved. Second? Second, Ms. Lemon? All in favor?